This public hearing is on Council Order 2022-016 Utility Grant of Location National Grid Gas, Russell Park, 1170 to 1200 Hancock Street. At this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the Raise the Hand feature or dial *9 on your phone. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. No written correspondence has been received by the clerks of committees for this item. And seeing, okay, so let's go forward. Anybody who is speaking in favor? We have anybody speaking in favor? Nope. Folks speaking opposed? Nope. So no written correspondences have been received by the clerk of committees for this item. And seeing not further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 6:33. We'll be back at 6:35 for the next public hearing. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to call again the public meeting for Monday, February 7th, 6:35 PM. Public hearings to order again in accordance with the Chapter 20 signed by Charles Baker. Extending the certain provisions of the open meeting law, Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing that will air on Quincy Access TV, QA TV. This public hearing is on Council Order 2022-017 Utility Grant of Location Mass Electric, Russell Park. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, Russell Park, 1170 to 1200 Street. Sorry. Yep. Okay. Okay. So is that the same one? I'm sorry. Oh, 17, is it? Okay. Sorry. So it's electric.
Same location, one's gas and one's electric.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that, Jen. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the Raise the Hand feature or dial *9 on your phone. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. So is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or against?
I'm Mary from National Grid. I'd like to speak in favor of the gas side.
Okay, Mary.
Thank you.
Is there anybody against? Seeing none? Nope. Thank you, Mary, for jumping on from National Grid. No written correspondences have been received by the clerks of committees for this item. Seeing not further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 6:36. Thank you. We'll be back at 6:40 for the next public hearing. Thank you. I would like to call the Monday, February 7th, 6:40 PM public hearing to order in accordance with the Chapter 20 of the 2021 signed by Governor Charles D. Baker on June 16, 2021. Extending the certain provisions of the open meeting law, Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, Channel QA TV 9, Government Access, and live streaming at www.qatv.org. This public hearing is on Council Order 2022-018 Utility Grant of Location Mass Electric, Verizon, 35 Arnold Street. So at this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the Raise the Hand feature or dial *9 on your phone. When you are called upon, please state your name and your address. So let's, I'd like to ask if there's anybody speaking in favor? Anybody speaking in favor? Okay. Okay. Not seeing any. Not seeing any. I would like to ask if there was anybody who was speaking against? Anybody speaking against? Nobody? Okay. So seeing that there's no written correspondence, seeing no written correspondences have been received by the clerk of committees for this item, seeing no further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 6:41. We'll be back at 6:45 for the final public hearing of the evening. I'd like to call to, I would like to call the Monday, February 7th, 6:45 public hearing to order in accordance with the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 signed by Governor Charles D. Baker, June 16, 2021. Extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access TV, Channel QA TV 9, Government Access, and live streaming on at www.qatv.org. This public hearing is on Council Order 2022-019 Utility Grant of Location Mass Electric, East Howard Street, 484 Quincy Ave. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the Raise the Hand feature or dial *9 on your phone. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. So with that, is there anybody who's speaking in favor? Please either hit the Raise the Hand feature or *9 on their phone. Nobody? Okay. That being said, is there anybody who would like to speak against? Okay. Seeing none? No written correspondences have been received by the clerk of committees for this item. And seeing not further public comment, I will close this hearing at 6:46 and we will reconvene with the regular council meeting at 6:50. Thank you, everybody who's attended. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll of the members.
Counselor Andronico. Counselor Andronico. Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Dubana.
Present.
If we can have a moment of silence, thank you, Madam Clerk. If we can have a moment of silence, use it as you wish. Madam Clerk, if you could, the reading of the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 signed by Governor Charles D. Baker, June 16, 2021, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV Channel, QA TV Number 9, Government Access. Before we get into our agenda items, I just want to tell my fellow council members, we will be installing Rule 26, which will give every councillor an opportunity to speak for 10 minutes and it will give an opportunity for the other councillors to come on. Each councillor, after the 10-minute time limit, will have an opportunity to speak five minutes after everyone has an opportunity to speak. And with that, first item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 1, 2022-020, An Appropriation for $2,300,000 for the Purchase of a New Quincy Fire Department Engine and Ladder Truck.
Counselor Phelan.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion that this is placed in the Finance Committee.
And to be advertised as well?
Be advertised as well.
Motion made by Counselor Phelan. Second, anyone a second? Counselor McCarthy, seconded?
Yes, sir.
So we got a motion and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Mahoney.
Just a quick question. If I could, I realize that this is going to be advertised for bond, but I would like to make a recommendation for the mayor to possibly consider the COVID money for this. So just a recommendation that we have upper money that can be used for vehicles. So just that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mahoney, Counsel Mahoney. Anyone else on the motion to speak? Seeing none, this is going to be referred to finance and advertise with a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The motion is referred to finance and advertise. That is the vote. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 2, 2022-021, An Appropriation for $1,500,000 for feasibility, excuse me, feasibility study for the new Squanam Elementary in accordance with MSBA process.
I recognize Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm thrilled tonight to make a motion to move this item into the Finance Committee as the start of the next important phase of what will, in the near future, lead to a new Squanam Elementary School for our community. We've moved through two phases of the state funding process for school construction through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The first phase being invited into the funding pipeline and the second demonstrating that the city has the capacity and management experience to handle a major school project. The next phase called the feasibility study phase is really where the rubber starts to hit the road. This is the phase where our project team will develop the educational program and space needs for the school and prove that the building's existing conditions very clearly demand the need for a school building. Once we've moved past this phase over the next several months, we'll hopefully be approved to move into the design and ultimately construction phase. I know you are probably all tired of hearing me talk about the importance of this school for the Squanam community. Excuse me, but I'm going to say it again. This school is really the beating heart of the entire neighborhood. So much, so much community life centers around it. Its future is absolutely vital to Squanam and really to our entire city. I am greatly looking forward to having a discussion with all of you and hearing from project team, the project team that has already done so much to get us where we are today at the Finance Committee. I want to also thank the administration and everybody who's worked on this and have supported the people of Squanam, Ward 6, everybody who will benefit from this project. With that, motion to move to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Counselor Harris. And I got a second by Counselor Phelan. This also can be referred to finance and advertise as well. Any discussion on the motion? I have see Counselor Palmucci and then Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take an opportunity to express my thoughts on the measure. I think it's terrific that we're moving forward in this direction in Squanam. I can tell you firsthand from the experience we had with the Southwest Middle School, how game-changing creating a new school is in terms of expressing not only to the general community, but to the students who were in that school, how serious we take their education. And that we, you know, they're not going to school in a place that has leaky roofs, water dripping into buckets, but they're going into an educational complex that is state-of-the-art. So this is terrific. I want to also commend Counselor Harris for his advocacy in getting this school. I know it's something that he's been banging the drum on for a long time and have to say, I don't, I don't know if it's too early to discuss this, but he did get rid of the bridge and he's getting a new Squanam Elementary School. It might be possible that Bill Harris is the GOAT of Ward 6 councillors. I'm not sure of that. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to just commend Counselor Harris's work in spearheading this effort as he has for quite a while now. This isn't happening just overnight. And so as a kid that went to Squanam School, I'm very excited to see that it's finally going to be renovated all these years later. I just wanted to ask because I do realize and appreciate that this is going into Finance Committee and so there's going to be a much larger discussion before anything moves forward, before anything gets approved. And the motion tonight is simply just to place it into committee for further discussion. But I do want to acknowledge that there were some emails that were sent out from some concerned residents about taking this as an opportunity to ensure that there's going to be a thorough study to consider having this be a net zero building. So again, you know, excited to have this conversation in more depth once we're in committee on it. But if I could to the mayor's chief of staff, I just want to ask you about any considerations that have been taken towards this and then at what point in the conversation can we ensure that this is going to be something that will be studied?
Sure. Through you, Mr. President, if I may.
Go right ahead, Mr. Walker.
Yeah. Counselor, every option is going to be on the table and going to be explored and that absolutely includes the possibility of making this a net zero building. We are, the mayor is committed to building the most sustainable school that is possible at that site. We are a little bit early in the process to get to that level of detail. The feasibility stage is really about telling our story that the building does need to be replaced, that it's not just a renovation or an addition, or that maybe the school's not needed anymore, those kinds of things. That's the step in the MSBA process we are right now. We fully anticipate moving beyond this stage where we get into schematic design and then full design and construction buildout. Those are some of the areas, times in the process where we can have a real meaty discussion relative to what is going to be included in the building. But that's not to say it's not, I'm not saying it's too early to have that discussion now. This is certainly a subject that will be thoroughly reviewed, thoroughly studied, and if it's at all humanly possible, I'm positive that this is a direction we would like to go.
Okay, thank you. And so just logistically speaking, just to make sure that, you know, I'm doing everything on my end as well to look into this and have, you know, a thorough understanding coming into the much larger conversation. Is this something that we can discuss in more detail at length in Finance Committee as well?
We could discuss it theoretically, Counselor, but there isn't going to be the meat on the bone to have any, we're not going to have answers to say, yes, we're designing a net zero building right now and this is what it would take to design a net zero building. As I said, the process that we are in right now is developing the educational requirements, developing space requirements, showing, amassing of what a facility may look like on that site, showing current conditions. This is a big piece of the feasibility studies that we have to show the current conditions of the school. And look, everybody on this call, particularly Counsel Harris, who's been in that school probably more than anyone else, understands that the building is more than a century old, it needs to be replaced. But the state comes at it from a more neutral standpoint where they're going to want us to show beyond a shadow of a doubt that this is absolutely a new school project and not necessarily an addition and not necessarily a renovation project. That's, that's job one on the feasibility end of this. When we start getting into schematic design and design build, that's when we have the engineering horsepower on hand to be able to say, you know, look, we can do net zero or we can't do net zero at this site because of A, B, C, and D. You know, that's the one thing we do know. We do know the site. We're not looking anywhere else in the city for the Squanam Elementary School or not looking anywhere else in Squanam for the Squanam Elementary School. The site is contained, the site is what it is, and we're fairly certain that that's where the site of a new building would be. So whatever we come up with will be developed in connection with the actual site that we're working with.
I see. So just to, again, make sure that I understand this correctly, this, this phase is just to show to the MSBA that the school is in dire need of getting rebuilt and that we do have plans that it is able to be rebuilt, correct?
Correct. We're going to show them, we have, at the end of this process, the conclusion of the feasibility study is the municipality's preferred option. And I don't think it's going to any secret or not, talking out of school, so to speak, not talking out of school by saying that, you know, our preferred option, the mayor's preferred option from day one, is an understanding that this is a new building project. But we still have to do the due diligence to show the MSBA that this is a new school project. And once we show them that, then we start talking about what the building wants to be.
Gotcha. Okay. So just to put it simply then, it's kind of, we're in the place where right now we're saying, okay, this is what we want to build, we want to make sure we can move forward the way we want to move forward with it, and we need them to say yes. And then at that point, we can say, okay, now that we can actually move forward, let's talk about how we're going to build this building and that's where we can have the conversation.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trying to reiterate a little bit of Counsel Palmucci. I'm glad I had an opportunity to put my full support behind it. This school was mentioned years ago when we were getting our hands around Quincy High, Central, Sterling, all the way back when I came along, we were just bringing Marshall online and Squanam always had its issues with either mostly physically itself, heat, the auditorium had major water issues, and I know the mayor has drawn together a pretty good maintenance crew that gets around and tries to take care of things. But if there was one school that could be designed and has the space down in Squanam also designed correctly and maybe possibly get it off the street, because I know it's been a safety issue for years of dropping kids on and off, either in good weather or in snowstorms out in Huckins, but we got some room down there. So I think it's a great opportunity and the feasibility studies, we've gone down these paths before, so we should have good luck and thank God the MSBA is around. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. We have Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things I just wanted to say here. One, I wanted to thank Counselor Harris for his advocacy on this. You know, during my time on the school committee, I had the chance to vote to move this project forward a few times with the MSBA and to see it be accepted through the eligibility period and have us move forward on these next steps is really good news for Squanam and the city of Quincy in general. One thing I did want to point out when it comes to the feasibility study is, you know, this is step three of eight in the MSBA build process here. And one thing it is important to understand when we're looking at the feasibility study is now is really the time where we need to be outlining the type of school that we want to build, the type of facility that may end up there. And it is critical to look at all options and that does include net zero for down the line or for closer, you know, in the next few years, once it's built, or even the capability to be upgraded to a net zero, you know, in the decades to come. So I do appreciate what's been said tonight. I do have faith in the administration to look at all options. I know they did that with Southwest, there are electric vehicle charging stations over there, they've taken new energy, a new energy approach over there as well to save on costs there. So it's a long process, but I do know my colleagues and I will stay on it to make sure that we're doing all we can on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Did I see Counsel Mahoney? Did I see your hand raised?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. I just want to also, I understand that this is the feasibility study and it is about, you know, what our hopes are for building new. But I don't think it, I do think it doesn't hurt to actually make sure that the MSBA knows that we want to try to build a net zero because it's in benefit to everything about what we're trying to do to efficiencies for our, for our school, for our municipality buildings. So whether we're standing in the feasibility in this part or all of the parts, just to know that this is something that we really do want to have for the Squanam School, it's probably one of the, it's probably going to be a single-story building, so it's probably the best option for a net zero. And I'm very hopeful that that's going to be something that happens for this, this school. So thank you very much.
Any other councillors? Just real quick on, you know, getting elaborate a little bit on Counsel McCarthy, we haven't had an elementary school since September of 1998. It's been 24 years since an elementary. We've had Quincy High School, obviously, 2010, it's Central, and then Southwest of Sterling. Now we're going back to an elementary school that's much needed as we have 11 elementaries in our city. I think it's also important to understand that we, this has been a lot of patchwork and a lot of Band-Aids that have done at this school and it's an obligation to us as a body and to the school committee and the schools that we get a new facility over there. With that, we're going to refer this to finance and advertise as well for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Yeah, that is a vote. Next item on the agenda.
Number 3, 2022-022, Order Confirmation of the Quincy Housing Authority Board Appointment.
Anyone on this? Councillors?
A motion to...
Mr. President, I move approval.
For the council.
There's a nominee to the housing authority. Mr. Flaherty is a very experienced individual in this space. He has, has an incredible background in it, having grown up in public housing himself. He cares deeply about it. I would, I think he's a, and he's been on the board, it's a reappointment. So I would ask, I would move approval.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci, and I think we have a second by Counsel Phelan. Counsel Phelan, Michael Flaherty. So this is a motion and a second in for a five-year term that's continued on here. With that, one of our roll call, when we go around, you must say his name, Michael Flaherty. Is that correct?
No. It's, it's been brought to our attention that Michael Flaherty is the only person's name that's on here, so it can be in all of favor.
We have a roll call on here. Counsel...
Like a roll call, of course, I can do one.
Let's do that, please. I could.
Counselor Andronico.
Michael Flaherty.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Michael Flaherty.
Counselor Liang.
Michael Flaherty.
Counselor Mahoney.
Michael Flaherty.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Michael Flaherty.
Counselor Phelan.
Michael Flaherty.
President Dubana.
Michael Flaherty.
Nine members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counsel. Next item on the agenda.
Number 4, 2022-023, An Ordinance under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C, Establishing a Residential Property Tax Exemption.
I recognize Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. This legislation seeks to establish a residential tax exemption. Based on my math, which is questionable perhaps, this would provide a tax break for any resident who owns and lives in their home in Quincy, a tax discount in the amount of $5 to $800 on the average tax bill per year. The purpose of this is really, you know, this isn't the first time I've introduced this, this isn't the first time I've worked on it, I've worked on it with other councillors over the years as well. But really, the crux of this is that Quincy residents need to benefit from the development happening in the city. Development doesn't work if existing residents don't receive some sort of benefit from it along the way. This would essentially guarantee that Quincy residents benefit from future development because the broadening of the tax base by rental properties, large, these large high-density development rental properties would only further increase the amount of the exemption, thus making taxes lower for Quincy residents. the exemption, thus making taxes lower for Quincy residents. The more development, the greater the benefit to existing residents. I would ask that this be referred to the Finance Committee and Oversight Committee for a further hearing.
As well as ordinance?
Yes, sure.
Do you want to put them all, you want to put them all, three?
Might as well.
Oversight, ordinance, and finance. And it's got to be advertised as well. Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. We have a-
Thank you.
Second? Second. Counselor McCarthy is seconded. Anyone else would like to speak on the motion? We'll go with Counsel Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleagues for continuing to beat the drum on this issue. I also would be remiss if whenever we didn't have a conversation around residential property tax exemption, if I didn't shout out and thank Colleen in the Assessor's Office as well as her team. They have been absolutely amazing in educating me in what this means and if and when it's possible. And just understanding essentially exactly how the different tax rates work here in the city, how different properties are being taxed, anywhere from, you know, a single-family home to a multifamily home to apartment buildings, to commercial properties, to the retail properties we have here across the city. I mean, it's really extensive and they have been great in checking in every single year and trying to see, okay, you know, have we had an increase on the commercial side of things where we can offset the residential tax base? And what does that look like? And if so, is it enough to actually create this exemption? And as it stands right now, the way properties work here in the city, we simply don't have that commercial base yet to offset it enough to create this exemption. However, that doesn't mean that we're going to stop, right? And we continue to work hard at this. And I just want to thank Colleen and the administration for, you know, continuing this conversation, knowing that it is a priority of ours. And so I'm just, I'm grateful to my colleagues for reintroducing this and making sure that we're continuing to beat this drum. Because even though we don't have a solution right now, it doesn't mean that we're not going to, you know, keep putting our heads together, working with a number of residents actually who have, you know, I've had the opportunity to speak with, who've come up with some really clever ideas as well to try to explore some, you know, creative ways of trying to make this work. So it's a huge team effort, right, of my colleagues, of the administration, of even residents. And so I just want to first and foremost, thank everyone for continuing to work on this. But secondly, just continue to ask for input and any thoughts that people have around this, right? If we, again, keep working to put our heads together on this, I think, I think hopefully soon we'll be able to find a solution that will work for everyone. So really excited to see this move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
I recognize Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, I'd like to thank Counselor Palmucci and Counselor Liang for their leadership on this issue and putting this forward a few years ago. And I'm very proud to co-sponsor this alongside a few more of my colleagues. You know, this past January, I did hear from more and more residents who got their new tax bill, just to let me know how they, they felt about the increase, which we did approve, and, you know, the city of Quincy in general, how they've grown up here, and they're concerned about moving forward, how they're going to be able to continue to live in the only city that they've known. You know, this property tax exemption is something that is not new to Massachusetts. It's something that other municipalities in Greater Boston have implemented. And I do think that this is something that Quincy can attain in the near future. So I look forward to the discussion in committee and working with my colleagues to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? Counselor Mahoney and then Counselor Kane.
Thank you very much. I too would like to have these conversations going forward. There's a lot of new buildings that are going up, and there's a lot of buildings being taken off of the tax rolls too. Buildings that we're not privy to the council being approved for those things. So we do have to have a balance of those things too, because commercial can only grow if we actually grow the commercial. But as we're taking things offline, that also causes a problem to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. Also, I'm just going to, to re-mention the fact that we have ARPA money that's coming in from the federal government that can be used to offset many things that we're doing. And the spending that we're doing in Quincy is becoming out of control. So we have to balance all of those things. Otherwise, people really won't be able to afford to do, to live here. And the problem is, is once we overspend, the person that we go back to is the residential tax homeowners, and we can't do that anymore. So thank you very much.
Recognize Counselor Kane.
Thank you, President Dubana. Yeah, I appreciate my colleagues reintroducing this concept. I think it's certainly worthy of continued discussion. And I think it's also worth noting that, you know, it's, it's a complicated equation that we're trying to figure out here. And obviously, a huge consideration into why the taxes continue to go up is around home value assessment, the increase, you know, obviously appreciation and inflation of home values across the city due to a limited supply. We're obviously not growing a certain stock of homes in the city anymore, which drives the values up. And so I think another side of this is thinking about what we're willing as a body and our powers as a city council to cut significant amounts of the budget structurally in order to make room for this exemption to take place. So I think we're going to have to be really clever. And I look forward to hearing, you know, more by way of discussion when this does come before committee and exploring really innovative ways for us to come up with financial solutions. I was hoping we were going to have a little more math tonight so that that could sort of fit into the discussion. But I appreciate this being reintroduced nonetheless. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Any other counselors before we go back to Counselor Palmucci? All right, Counselor Palmucci, you have the floor.
Yes, I just want to, I just want to be clear. When you're talking about a residential tax exemption, what happens is there's a shift. So you're saying that anybody who's eligible for an exemption, we get this exemption, this certain percentage of their, of their taxes, right? You know, so say it equates to $500 off the average tax bill. That would be made up for not in budget cuts and loss of service, but in the tax bills going up for properties like Avalon or other high-density rental properties or even non-high-density rental properties. It would go up on people who don't live in their home. For folks who live elsewhere, their taxes would, their taxes would go up by some amount that corresponds with the total amount that the residents would benefit from a tax exemption. So it wouldn't be a budget cut and a loss of service. It'd be a shifting of the tax burden in some like amount from Quincy residents who live, who own and live in their property. The burden would shift from them in a like amount to those who do not live in their property, property, but own in Quincy. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm sure we'll get into the numbers when we have further hearings on this. That would be my intention. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. I'm happy to co-sponsor this as the president. And I think we got to look at the fact that after the new year, I always get an abundance of emails and phone calls with their tax, new tax bill. We have to look at the fact that our senior citizen population, our families that are trying to stay in their houses with the inflationary rate at six, seven, maybe even up to 10% in some areas. And then also our veterans that are trying to get back into society and live in their houses. So our taxpayers, we have to do. We have a motion to approve and seconded to refer to ordinance, oversight, finance, and advertise. All those in favor, put a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. That is a vote. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2022-024, a resolved requesting report by DPW Commissioner on the status of contract compliance by Capital Waste Management.
Recognize Counselor Palmucci.
Yes, I would refer this. First of all, I would, I think we all got an email from some folks expressing a concern about this. I just think it's, it's worth getting into. I'd refer this to the Oversight and Public Works Committee for further hearing. I move approval and reference to Oversight and Public Works.
Thank you, Counselor Palmucci. We have a second?
Second.
Counselor, Counselor Liang seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Just real quick, I just wanted to say that I'm happy to co-sponsor this. I've gotten a couple of emails on this, this resolve, and I'm happy to give this to the DPW Commissioner and get some status on the contracts. I think one of the biggest issues that was going on was temp, temporary employees on the routes and not having background checks. So I hope we have a little bit more discussion on this. And DPW Commissioner Grau Graci also can come in front of us and give the status on that. So we have a motion by Counselor Palmucci and a seconded by Counselor Liang to approve and to refer to oversight with a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number six, 2022-025, a gift for $350 for various donors for DARE.
Entertained to approve here, counselors?
A motion to approve?
A motion made by Counselor McCarthy. We have a second? Seconded by Counsel Kane, or is that Counsel Andronico? Can't see. Any discussion on the, on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda?
Number seven, 2022-026, a gift for $600 from various donors for veteran services in memory of Joe Bril.
Motion to approve?
Motion made by Counselor McCarthy? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kane. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2022-027, a gift for $550 for various donors for veteran services in memory of Jerry Mullin.
Motion to approve?
Motion made by Counselor Mahoney and seconded by Counselor McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That concludes all of our agenda items. Our next is approval of previous meeting minutes of January 24, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Liang. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion in the minutes? Seeing none. Voice vote. All those in favor?
Yes. Aye.
Any opposed? That is a vote. The ayes have it. Communication and reports from mayor, other city officer, and city boards. Anyone, counselors? Seeing none. On to unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Anyone, counselors? Seeing none, we're on to the next. Reports of committees, roll call votes on all. Okay. Reports of committees. Counselor, I recognize Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. During this evening, Public Works Committee items to be passed was a hearing for a council order 2022-016, utility grant of location, national grid gas, Russell Park, 1170 to 1200 Hancock Street. Positive recommendations from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Harris. Anyone seconded?
Second.
Counsel Phelan seconded. Can I have a roll call on this, Madam Clerk, please?
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
You may proceed, Counsel Harris.
Thank you. Public hearing was held for 2022-017, utility grant of location, Mass Electric, Russell Park, 1170 to 1200 Hancock Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee.
Positive recommendation for Counsel Harris.
And motion.
Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
There was a public hearing also held this evening for council order 2022-018, utility grant of location, Mass Electric, Horizon, 35 Arnold Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Harris. Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
And lastly, a public hearing was held, council order 2022-019, utility grant of location, Mass Electric, East Howard Street, the 484 Quincy Ave. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve by Counsel Harris. Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Any other reports of committees, counselors? Seeing none. On to the next, presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Any counselors? Seeing none. On to motions, orders, and resolutions. Don't see any counselors. Seeing our next item on here, scheduling committee meetings and public hearings. Counsel Phelan, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. President. Looking to schedule a finance committee meeting for the items that turned up this, this week that came in, the one for the fire engine and for the Squanum School, and possibly looking for the council meeting on March 7.
Okay, you feel free to put that on for at 6:30. We'll do our finance committee right before, and then we'll go into our regular scheduled meeting. If I could declare committees, can we do that at 7:00 or 7:30? Or can we just put it on the agenda?
Finance committee at 6:30 and then-
Finance Committee at 6:30 and then counsel at 7:00?
Yes.
Give a half hour to each order?
Yes, that would be great. And then if we can, we can continue into the, if we go into our regular scheduled at 7:30. Is that good for everybody, counselors? Everybody good with that time? So we're going to go Monday, March 7. We'll go 6:30 for the fire aspiratus, and then we'll go with the Squanum School at 7:00, and then we'll have a regular scheduled 7:30 meeting. And if we have, if we need to go back into and continue time, we can, more than welcome to do that. Is that good?
That's good.
Okay.
Mr. President.
With the scheduling of the other committee meetings, we have Monday, February 14, which is next week. It's a week from today at 6:30. We also obviously have our March 7. We have March 21, April 4, and April 25. As the agenda items get a little bit more intense, feel free to take your time and be ready for our meetings. We're going to continue to do our 6:30s. As you can see, as Governor Baker has extended our Zoom meeting, so we'll stick with 6:30. With that, anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I also, if I could, I just want to wish everyone, sorry, Mr. President, if that's okay, Happy Lunar New Year to everyone. I forgot earlier, but that's all.
Thank you, Counsel Liang. Anyone else? Motion made to adjourn.